Slime that to you.
Well, that's like too. Dexter.
Is that the start?
Good to go.
Lisa?
We're good to go.
Great. Share here and we can start then.
All right. Great. Hello, everyone. Agatha Ventura, she/her, I called the Human Rights and Equity Commission November seventeen twenty twenty five hybrid meeting to order at four thirty P M. We will begin with a roll call. For an equitable experience, please provide a self description and announce your name before commenting. This helps the blind and visually impaired know who is speaking. Reminder, this is a hybrid meeting and to ensure that both in person and online participants can actively engage, everyone must speak directly into the microphone. I'll begin. Agatha Ventura, she/her, I am wearing an orange turtleneck with dark brown hair, Latina face and wearing glasses today. And I'll pass it over to Jackie Curry.
Present. Pronouns are they she? Um, I'm a native mixed native person. I'm wearing a blue long sleeves, hooded sweater and have long brown hair.
Thank you. Good to see you. Scott Jones.
Scott Jones, present. He/him, I am a middle aged white male, dark hair, gray highlights, wearing a brown plaid flannel shirt.
Thank you. Cameron Fisher.
He's not online.
Thank you. Harley Colgan.
Harley can't make it today.
Thank you. Christina Morales Moyano.
This is Christina. I never said, I never know what to say, but I'm, I'm a Hispanic woman. Close to fifty, two more years. And then I'm wearing my, like a black shirt and scarf. Scarf, right? Brown scarf, brown jacket. And I've been fighting with my hair to be in this bun. And that's it pretty much.
Thank you. Eli Lowenstein.
Hello, Commissioner Eli Lowenstein. My pronouns are he/him. I'm a tall, white male with curly brown hair, wearing a maroon long sleeve T-shirt.
Thank you. Phoenix Ben Hassel.
Not online.
Jen Kovitz.
Uh, Jen Kovitz, present in chambers today. Um, I'm a white, middle aged woman with my hair pulled back and my bangs braided back. I'm wearing a black cozy sweater and, uh, and no glasses.
Good to see.
Pronouns she/her.
Thank you. Mario Anguiano.
Ah, yes. I am a brown twenty eight year old with glasses, short hair. Uh, my name is Commissioner Anguiano, first name Mario. I'm here through, uh, through, through remote Zoom and happy to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. Good to see you. Beth Hanon.
Beth Hanon, my pronouns are she/her. I am a short, upper middle aged woman with gray and brown hair and today I'm on a blue jacket.
Thank you. Ruth Bernardico.
Not online.
And Kinsey Martin.
Not online.
Just as a note, Kinsey might join later. Um, there is a school board meeting today, so some adjustments for that.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, everyone, for being here today. We'll move into our City of Bend land acknowledgement statement and I'll pass it over to Kathy Bargill.
Hola, um, hi, everyone. I'm Kathy. Um, I'm Latina woman with curly hair, wearing an burnt orange shirt today. And some gold hoops. Um, that's signature. And going into how to support Warm Springs, so based on consultations with, um, the Confederated Tribes of Warm Spring Leadership and Council. We've moved away from reading the land acknowledgement at every council meeting and will be migrating towards a sovereignty acknowledged with acknowledgement, which is currently being developed. And so, um, on this list, you can find some ways to support the Warm Springs community, um, opportunities that, um, folks, um, from Warm Springs had shared directly and also ones that you can find publicly. These include, um, the Tribal Democracy Project led by Brian Smith and Jalen Suppa, um, the Tananowit Store, um, for Native artists at Warm Springs, um, the Chush Fund, um, for, um, advocating for clean water at Warm Springs, um, work done by the Community Action Team, uh, mostly on entrepreneurship, youth development and education at Warm Springs. The, uh, link to support the Warm Springs Museum, as well as, uh, link to support the Columbia River Institute for Indigenous Development that's led by Jefferson Green, um, for preserving, sharing and advancing Indigenous language, arts, sports, health and spirituality. Okay, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. And we had a commissioner join us if you'd like to, uh, say hello and introduce yourself today.
Hi, Cameron Fisher, she/her.
Thank you. Good to see you. And moving into our ATRAC business for today, starting with, uh, our approval of minutes, moving into our ATRAC leadership positions. Going into our business for today, the AIM Equity Tool and Wildfire Project update, then our ATRAC liaison updates with Kathy. Public comment. We have someone joining us today that has written in and we'll see if anyone else has joined. Our ATRAC Council Liaison Update will be a bit later today before roundtable and then we will adjourn. Are there any questions or corrections for the October twenty twenty nine, or excuse me, twenty nine twenty twenty five draft minutes from our last meeting? Great. With no corrections, may I have all in favor, I?
Alright.
Thank you. Any opposed? Great. The October twenty ninth twenty twenty five minutes are approved. And we'll be moving into the ATRAC leadership positions for the upcoming year. We'll pass it over to Kathy.
Excellent. Thanks, everyone. So, based on our last conversation, um, I did a little digging into how leadership positions were first established for ATRAC, um, with work by Andres and also previous work by the commission. And there were four seats that were identified as leadership positions for ATRAC, so that's Chair position, Vice Chair, Council Connector, and also Commissioner Connector position. I have in the next few slides and a overview of what those different leadership positions, um, were detailed to do. Part of your work plan also included the creation of, uh, three subcommittees for ATRAC as well. And so I just wanted to bring that up again, um, in conversation. It's part of the approved work plan, but I'm not sure if those subcommittees have met and if there's a desire to modify the leadership positions to better reflect leadership of those subcommittees and the work that, um, they were laid out to do. So it's really just a conversation today with all of you about, um, your thoughts on, I don't want to call, I guess, yeah, uh, role descriptions underneath these, um, leadership positions right now and how to move forward. So, uh, I'm going to advance to the next slide and I'll show you what Chair and Vice Chair kind of laid out to do right now. And it's really small text and I apologize. There's quite a lot, so, um, I'll provide an overview for Chair. It's currently the work that Agatha does and so it's presiding over official meetings. It's, uh, consulting with myself, um, to draft meeting agendas, lead discussions, uh, serving as primary spokesperson, um, along with the city staff liaison, um, representing the ATRAC, uh, to city council boards, commissions, media, other external agencies. We can have a conversation about how that's been done to, you know, to what extent so far, um, and comfortability around that, uh, prepare documents and correspondences for distribution, that, excuse me, delegating tasks to fellow ATRAC members. And also, uh, Agatha and I meet one to two weeks before we have to finalize an agenda, uh, just to have that ready for the meeting. Right now, I don't believe we have a Vice Chair, uh, detailed as part of the commission and so they share very similar responsibilities, uh, really just stepping in when the Chair is out for some reason to lead meetings. All of the positions besides the Chair that I'll share with you are detailed to serve for one year. So I could not find language for Chair that would only limit it to one year. And that was just curious to me. Um, I couldn't find that language, so, um, that's really, oh, go ahead, Ian.
Sorry, just a quick comment. Um, Ian Leihizer, City Attorney, um, white man, short brown hair, wearing a blue jacket. Um, the code, municipal codes that applies to all boards and committees says, says that the first meeting of each calendar year, each board committee, including ATRAC, is supposed to elect a Chair and Vice Chair. So just to Kathy's point, I think the implication is it is for a term of one year for all of these positions.
Perfect. Okay, that's good clarification.
I did, yeah. Ian Leihizer, the City Attorney.
Yeah. Excellent. So, um, do we have any questions or conversations that arise from these two descriptions that I've shared so far?
I bet, Hannah, I'm, I'm kind of curious, Agatha, like, over the last year, I don't know, things have been a little uneven because there were times when things were happening more. But can you give an idea of how, like, how many hours a week or how many hours a month you've spent in those, doing what you've been doing?
Agatha Ventura, she/her, it's a little hard to quantify, but I think it's a matter of, it's not just the one meeting a month.
Right.
Because you're also having prep meetings with the other leadership members when possible. I try to stay involved with as many events as I can, um, just to one, be representative of ATRAC, but also learn what's happening wherever I can. Um, and Andres would often, before Kathy stepped in, would often, um, invite, invite me with, into different spaces with other commissions. And so it's hard to quantify any specific month. But I would say, think about one day a week committing an evening to something.
And Agatha, I think also as a question to you, um, do you feel supported enough, um, in currently not operating with a Vice Chair or is that a change that you would like to see?
I think a Vice Chair would be helpful. I always find it helpful, especially when we're meeting with just leadership, to have as many voices represented as possible. And it also does lighten the load.
Yeah.
To have a second person, so we could split up if there were per se, maybe two events the same week. Okay, you go handle this one, I go handle this one. Yeah. And also, however, we can support you moving forward because a lot of my introduction to ATRAC was, uh, a lot of the work on Andres, but I think there's opportunity to help the liaison also in lighting their load as well. With like helping with agendas, things like that.
Thanks, Agatha. Um, any folks online, would you like to offer any thoughts, comments? No one? All right. I'll move on to the connector positions that, uh, we have, uh, thus far operated with on ATRAC. So the first one is that Council Connector position. The responsibilities detailed under that position include drafting a monthly email, um, on ATRAC activities and accomplishments for the month, sent to commissioners. And, uh, currently, the Council Liaison, um, Counselor Perkins, meet with City Council Liaison to identify crossover work and collaboration. Work with the Chair and Vice Chair and City Staff to draft official recommendations from ATRAC to City Council. Collaborate with the Chair, Vice Chair and City Staff on content development for briefings to City Council and other tasks within the ATRAC scope. Attend City Council meetings when equity issues arise and may be asked by the Chair to report on ATRAC activities during those council update meetings. Attend that leadership meeting, um, along with Agatha, when possible, um, to determine the agenda and items for that next meeting. And again, it's, um, serving for one year. And, um, the Commissioner Connector is, um, the responsibilities laid out are setting up monthly or quarterly social gatherings if possible. Periodically checking in with commissioners to ensure engagement, uh, coordinate care and respite for commissioners. As personal issues arise, serve as a confidant to receive feedback, lead the reporting of safety concerns so the larger ATRAC group is needed. Also, um, participating in those additional leadership meetings, um, and term limited to one year. So it's kind of what's been, uh, laid out, at least within the documentation that I could find, um, for ATRAC right now. Uh, the next slides are on the subcommittees, so I'm happy to, um, and I would really welcome some thoughts and, um, suggestions for the connector positions, um, as they stand right now, if there are any changes you'd like to observe, um, additional or moving around of responsibilities or, or roles as well, so. Yeah. And also insight from the current connectors as well in terms of, um, what kind of support, um, you would like to see for those roles so that they can grow into and feel more comfortable to carry out some of these, um, responsibilities as well, so. Yeah.
This is Jackie. I guess what I would say right now is just that I would like to take some time to look over the description, um, outside of the meeting and then give some, some thoughts and feedback. Generally speaking, I would say this is pretty accurate to what I've been doing in the Council Connect position.
Uh, this is Scott Jones, Commissioner Connector, and, um, I would also say that the list that is on the screen is pretty accurate to what, um, has happened or does happen. It took a little time at the beginning of the year to finally get a social gathering together, but once we had them, had one together, we were able to, I think we probably had six in the last year. Uh, various engagements and that was, um, that was cool and, um, definitely had the opportunity to check in with a few commissioners throughout the year for different reasons, um, and listen, um, taking phone calls, um, text messages, all of those things, um, and been available for that, so, um. Yeah, and we do attend, um, that additional meeting every month and, um, and it's been almost a year. So, yeah, I, I would say, um, from my experience, that's pretty consistent, at least with what I've been able to stay focused on with that position. Thank you.
Agatha Ventura, she/her, I would also add, uh, we're sort of, the leadership group has also acted as sort of ad hoc, like, with now having the email reinstated, if there's something that were to come in, I feel like the leadership would be on point to receive any input on what is coming in from the community before we reach the larger meeting. So just sort of be, I, I feel like Jackie and Scott are consistently receiving messages from me like, oh, we have to talk about this or, oh, look at this article, whatever may be, um, so just trying to stay tapped in.
And this is Kathy, just to clarify a point that, um, Agatha, um, just provided to the group. So the ATRAC email has been reinstated and the website has been updated. So, um, any ATRAC related community feedback, um, emails will go to that ATRAC email going forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Can I get some clarification? Sorry, Cameron, for sure. Can I get some clarification about the ATRAC email? Should we be, have we been getting emails regarding ATRAC?
It is fielded by the staff liaison, so I receive it and then I would send out to, um, the commission. And I'll lean on Ian, um, for additional questions behind that, but part of the reason is because when ATRAC as a body responds, the community member becomes really difficult from a single inbox for the body as a whole to respond. It would require some coordination.
I thought that didn't even exist.
It has been newly reinstated.
So that existed in the past? Because I don't remember ever. All of us were getting emails from the community members?
No.
Just that inbox.
Just that inbox and so the.
Somebody was filtering the inbox.
Yes, correct. It would have been Andres in the past and before, um, Andres, it would have been either Zavi or Anna Allen who were in the roles, um, before, were supporting ATRAC before, to previous.
Yeah, I think it's very rare we ever got any emails, so, okay, okay.
Scott Jones, uh, Commissioner, um, and I think a clarification, Kathy, from last time was that, uh, before it was reinstated, those messages and it said on the website, we're going directly to.
They were going to the equity inbox at large and so any type of, um, yeah, any emails that were coming in regarding equity work at the city, whether they were directed towards staff or commissioners, it was all kind of in the one inbox. So this one, um, it's really pointed in the sense that it is being, you know, those emails are coming in directed to, um, commissioners.
Thank you.
Yes.
Um, this is Jen Kovitz, uh, Commissioner. Uh, will you remind us of the, so we're, we're seeing these descriptions, what's kind of like the timeline, where are we, where are we going next?
Yes, absolutely. So I'm first, um, at the end of this meeting, we'll send out, um, this presentation along with these descriptions for your, um, individual thoughts, feedback. Uh, we'll come back at the December meeting, not just on these four positions, but I'll show you those subcommittees that, um, were identified within your work plan to see if there might be some proposed changes at the December meeting. We'll decide what those leadership positions will be and in January, we'll nominate and vote, um, for new leadership on the commission.
Agatha Ventura, she/her, and if one, because this will come up when we start talking about the subcommittees, which to give a little intel from the transition of the last few meetings with Andres, we were starting to move away from the commissions. And so one of the things I propose as we're talking about the positions, I personally am very interested in proposing one new position. And so I also would encourage folks to consider, based on what the subcommittees were, if there may be a role that could facilitate some of that work, which may be another way to approach what the subcommittees were originally set up to do, but we did not quite get there.
This is Kathy. Thanks, Agatha. And I think with that, I'll go on to the next slide. It's just a brief overview of what those subcommittees were laid out to do and, um, with the question and requested feedback of, do we want to propose, um, alternate, leadership positions within ATRAC or additional, just based, um, you know, just roles based on those subcommittees? So I'll jump to this slide here. Uh, this first one, uh, it's in line with what, uh, Chair Ventura was proposing is a community engagement subcommittee, uh, to develop and implement strategies for inclusive, trust-based engagement with Ben's marginalized communities. That other one was Education and Awareness Subcommittee, so fostering public understanding, institutional awareness, um, on culturally relevant education. And, uh, working on developing those partnerships. And then the third subcommittee that was identified was a policy subcommittee for developing, evaluating and recommending, uh, equity-focused policies that support systemic change. So these were the three subcommittees that were identified in the work plan. Um, I appreciate the background on the movement away from the subcommittees. I think that this is really important work and, uh, also quite detailed. There is a, uh, under the, the framework for each of these subcommittees, there are identified goals and like a work plan for them as well. And so, uh, I think that it could be interesting to have a leadership role within ATRAC to help advance some of those specific goals, um, under those subcommittees. And so, um, I'll note down myself to send, um, that out with this presentation, just so you have an understanding of what was falling under those work plans for each subcommittee as well.
Uh, Beth Hanon here. Um, so just to clarify, these subcommittees, did they ever actually function and get together or?
Agatha Ventura, she/her, so that was a little color I was going to add. I think we may have met twice, almost three times, depending on subcommittee, but some of the issues was were rooted in that Andres was leading all of them and all the scheduling for all of them and all of three were trying to meet in between meetings. And so it was, it was just unsustainable in that structure, but I think the goals still stick with what our general work plan is. So I think there, there are still things we can pull from that, but I, I think a different structure might behoove that moving forward.
This is Jackie. I, I could be wrong, but I think a big part of it too was all of the legalities around how many people meeting and decisions that could and couldn't be made. And then that, this is partially what led to more roundtable discussion as well. Because how much of, it was kind of discussed, like, how much of this can we just actually do all together at our meetings? So the work, hundred percent, I would love personally to see all of it move forward in some capacity. But yeah, there was just multiple problems with, yeah. Very important.
Yep, this is Jen Kovitz, uh, Commissioner. It took, I totally remember that, the same way that part of it was the, um, public meetings, issues, decision-making versus recommendation. It felt like it was actually, um, there was less work, less work was able to get done in a longer period of time in order to respect those public meetings and so doing it together. Yeah.
Uh, this is Kathy. Uh, I think, um, perhaps, and again, Ian, if there's anything to clarify, I know that these, the subcommittee structure was part of the adopted work plan by council for ATRAC. And so is there an opportunity to perhaps modify this if, you know, those leadership positions were to change where essentially the work would continue to move forward just with a little bit of a different structure versus a subcommittee, it might be one person bringing, um, that topic or goal to the roundtable discussion and leading that conversation within the whole group?
Yeah, Ian Leihizer, yeah, anybody online can't hear me because I'm not near a mic, let me know, but I'm hearing anyone complaining. Um, thank you, Kathy.
Yeah, all of these, it, a subcommittee is going to be subject to the public meetings law if it's making recommendations to the main committee and you can see recommend or, yeah, you can see recommend, uh, at least for the policy subcommittee. So that creates a lot of extra work and notification requirements and public notice and a lot of stuff that you have to do to comply with the public meetings law. So I guess if I were suggesting something, um, subcommittee can be really effective because you can get a smaller group together and bring ideas or recommendations to the main group. But three subcommittees for one main group is a lot. If you're thinking about the utility of subcommittees, maybe, maybe you could think about having two or maybe even one to get some work done in between meetings and maybe that would help, um, move things along. But I think with three subcommittees all subject to the same requirements that, uh, an ATRAC meeting or a city council meeting is subject to in terms of public meetings law, that's a lot of process.
Cameron Fisher, she/her. I think much of this is embedded in the purpose of ATRAC in itself. I also feel like it may be best at this point to scrap any sort of subcommittees unless they're situational because they seemed, um, fruitless and lack of leadership. And I think we were all good. I think it was kind of, uh, a distraction as opposed to like what ATRAC should be focusing on. So I don't know if that would be, make sense to table the idea of subcommittees for now, um, and get back into like the purpose of ATRAC. And then if certain things pop up, a subcommittee, um, such as welcoming week or something that's particularly specific to, um, I also don't think people have tons of time to, uh, commit to a bunch of work. I mean, these are very big lofty subcommittee goals. So that would be my recommendation after being on this for quite some time and seeing just, it's just treading water, not moving any which way.
This is Jackie. I, I agree with that, um, as well as just through the lens of generally speaking, ATRAC even as a whole is still such a small slice of, in terms of like getting equitable voices at the table and diverse voices. And so I feel like these topics, we should have as many voices at the table as possible when we're discussing these things.
And partners.
Yeah.
Agatha Ventura, she/her, I agree and would also still like to see if it were possible to include a point person or leadership person for, not necessarily a subcommittee, but for certain projects. For instance, the community engagement one is very important. For instance, the community engagement one is very important to me because uh we saw it with the family kitchen event where unless we have someone that can keep track of who's signing up, what date we're going, it's very unlikely that all of us or a good chunk of us will be able to show up to um do actual community work. So if there's something that we want to, and I overall want to encourage all leadership positions, chair included, and I wish I could tell myself this back in February, but I think we have the agency to say, oh, this is something we could do and make it happen. And so I want to encourage that from all of us, even on not leadership positions, to come to the table and not be told what we need to do, but come and say, oh, this is something that's very important to me, which I think we're doing more and more with Roundtable. But the way we're gonna handle those things, it is gonna take also somebody saying outside of this meeting, oh, let me send a quick email to everyone that said they wanted to get more information about this event, or else we're not, just not gonna keep things moving. And so that with things where we're trying to, like we have someone who will create those um social events, the Commissioner Connect, uh but something where we're being a part of that community and also engaging with the organizations that exist, I think that's gonna take a little bit of onus on people in leadership positions or someone involved with the things that are happening to bring it to the group.
Bet handed, but is that something that could be delegated or people could volunteer to do that rather than having to have a whole separate subcommittee meeting?
Totally. I think it could be one person as a leader bringing it to the group.
It's, I just want to add this. I, I, I don't really even know if that piece is under the umbrella of ATRAC's role. Um, I think, I think it's great. Like if somebody's gonna go do something, they send a text or encourage that, but I don't necessarily think that that, that was a nice event, but I don't think that's part of ATRAC's purpose. Um, and I think we all can find things that are passionate about and go and initiate our own engagement. I don't think it necessarily has to be ATRAC because it's not connecting to recommendations to the city and to council that I think is the purpose of ATRAC. Um, maybe it's one additional thing, but I think maybe this comes back down to the purpose of this commission. Not that I don't think it's wonderful, uh, but I just, I don't know if it's worth adding that one piece that takes a lot of logistics.
This is Jackie. One of my thoughts on that is actually like as we're discussing it is if that could almost just be part of the Commissioner Connect?
Yeah.
Because it, yeah, you're right. It's not part of like our ATRAC goals. Um, and that it's optional, it's, you know.
Agatha Ventura, she her. Yes, and again, I would say it does fit under an umbrella where we are uh creating partnerships with the organizations that are doing the work directly and drawing attention to the work that is happening, the resources that are available and being a part of that, I do think is part of human rights and equity overall. Uh, and being representative in those communities. Uh, but I do understand that not everyone has the time and ability to commit, but if that is something that is, that we can, I would think connecting it to the Commission Connect is a great way to do that, but I would not remove it because it's just another thing to add on. I would say it's, it fits under a greater umbrella.
This is Kathy. I think I have some work to do um.
Must move on.
Um, and alternate structure um before the December meeting, so I'll make sure to um yeah, I think still capture the uh the spirit, the essence of these, the subcommittee work within some leadership um roles within uh ATRAC. And so uh we can discuss in December after you've had a time to review, I'll make sure to send that out a couple of weeks before the next meeting, so you have ample time um to offer feedback. So with that, uh Chair, are we good to move into business?
Yes, please. Starting with the AIM Equity Tool and Wildfire Project Updates with Lindsay Wenglosky, excuse me.
Um, thank you for the opportunity, Commissioners and uh Chair Ventura, to share a couple of updates on two projects that we are working on tonight. Uh, next slide, please. Um, so I know that you are all familiar with the work um regarding the AIM Equity Tool that Andres was moving um right, right before his transition. And I do want to acknowledge that this is work that has both evolved and been built on over time. And so my hope tonight with talking about the AIM Equity Tool specifically is to just use this as an opportunity to set a common foundation. Um, I understand the ATRAC lens is part of, of y'all's work plan as well. Um, and I also want to acknowledge that the AIM Equity Tool has kind of moved into that internal body of equity work that I steward. So figured it was just a good time um to kind of check back in, reset, and share a couple of updates about where we currently are with developing this resource for staff. And then secondly, um, and somewhat similarly, I know in terms of wildfire as a, a broader concept, and then thinking also about wildfire education for community and risk reduction initiatives, that this is a topic that's, you know, very much on many of our, our minds. And I know that this is something that has come up before um for this commission as an area of interest and desired involvement. And also recognize that that is true for many folks in our community who have lived experience with wildfire, whether it's here or elsewhere. And so wanted to give a little overview on behalf of that project team um and highlight a few ways to be involved if you would like to. So that's why I'm here. Um, next slide, please. So again, uh, I apologize if this is redundant. Again, this is just part of that foundation setting piece. Um, but really, to kind of like bring us all together, the AIM Equity Tool at its core is a set of guiding questions that help city staff examine how decisions affect or could affect either our internal, our external customers, or a mixture of both. And really, you'll see these questions on the next slide in a moment, but these questions are designed to help us identify and question assumptions we might have, those working assumptions when we're approaching policy development or service delivery or any number of other, other items. Um, these questions also help us um identify potential unintended consequences of decisions. Um, and will help flag as well some existing disparities when they exist that could be affecting different parts of our community in different ways that we would want to know to help inform, again, that decision-making that we're doing every day um as city staff. And finally, the M part of the AIM acronym is really designed to just track and evaluate outcomes using data and making sure that our outcomes are in fact equitable. And if they're not, uh, this tool is designed to help staff course correct and iterate over time so that we're, we're moving towards those targets that we've set and that we know we, we want to be, be navigating towards an end meeting. Um, this resource, as you probably also know, comes from council goals and the Accessible and Effective Government Section. Specifically, you'll see it listed there as incorporate the equity framework into the city's decision-making processes. Uh, the AIM Equity Tool is that same equity framework. We've just iterated on it a bit. Andres kind of made this a more nimble tool that can be used in a variety of situations. So the aforementioned service delivery, but also project planning, budgeting, um, policy-related work, as well as everyday routine processes like meetings or project charter conversations or things like this. The real goal is that this is an adaptable and usable tool across departments and across context in our organization. So um, and my hope is that this will be used not just when we're launching initiatives, but also when there are those points on the trail for a project or anything else where we want to take a breath, pause, and either look back where we've been to decide where we need to go, or when we're starting to think about what we really want for that future state with a program or, or anything else. So again, um, I'm really excited and, and honored to be taking this tool on. And again, I know like this is a foundation that's been set kind of early, um, earlier in the year, earlier in the season. Um, next slide, please. Um, but I'll get to kind of what we're working on here in just a minute. But I apologize as well for the unintentional eye exam that you're getting here. Um, but these are some of the questions that comprise the AIM Tool. If you haven't had a chance to see them, um, one thing I like showing about them is just the variety even within each of those buckets in terms of checking our assumptions, identifying um those potential, potential unintended consequences of a decision and then measuring that impact and, and really bringing data um front of mind. And really because we want this tool to be used by staff in a variety of situations, the guidance that we're giving is that staff should be using the questions that apply to the situation they find themselves in because policy review versus meeting design are different animals. Um, I won't read those questions, but hopefully that gives you a sense of just the scope of kind of what this tool is designed to do and, and the, the considerations it's designed to surface internally as staff do their work. Next slide, please. So, foundation set, kind of current state now is just checking in and making sure the resources that we have already for this tool as part of our kind of internal equity tool, like constellation of resources that we're building at the city, that all, all of those are good. And we're also in the process of building in a feedback structure so that we can continue iterating on this tool and really engaging with staff who are using the tool to understand if there are resources that they still need that could support their work and make it even more intuitive and a lighter lift in some ways to utilize this tool in uh that variety of contexts that I mentioned earlier. Um, the other thing that we're building right now is related to usage. We want to understand, again, applying that M, the measure component back on the tool itself. We want to understand really where is the tool being used? Are there opportunities to expand that usage or, or reach out to departments and um serve as a resource or a navigator for the tool if it's maybe their first time or first couple of times using it? Um, just kind of surface trends over time and opportunities to either improve the, the AIM Equity Tool itself or simply build out a community of thought partners internally for staff who want some additional mentorship or um thought partnership, again, sounding boards on how to use this tool in uh their particular context, whether it's departmental or in their core ser- core service area or something like this. So that's kind of current state, what we're doing. And I'm excited also that, that future ongoing work piece kind of builds on the building itself there. Um, wanting to really nurture connections across teams and identify folks who are champions for this work and really um braiding them into continuing to shore up this tool and make it a routine part of our process. Um, I'll also flag that an additional project that's in progress right now, the Indicator Report will be a really natural pairing for the AIM Equity Tool moving forward. The Indicator Report, just as a quick, like, quick highlight, is a really visual tool. It's designed to be um kind of like a, a visual support, um, including like a digital narrative organized by thematic categories like demographics or talking about economic indicators in our community that explains why each category matters for staff to understand and what each category tells us about our community's needs. Um, this Indicator Report kind of combined with an internal sandbox with geographic data and thematic overlays for departments to use relative to their own work will be a way for staff to take the questions from the AIM Equity Tool and then turn to the available internal as well as kind of more broader data, publicly available data, and start to surface some areas of inquiry or exploration for their particular use cases. So I'm excited to basically be building in the AIM Equity Tool as we go through the rest of the year and into the following year. Um, and using those different opportunities, whether it's connecting with departments and talking about existing tools like equity and accessibility resources that staff are already using and familiar with or the new Indicator Report, but finding ways to really tell the story that we have a full, like, kind of array of tools that employees can use in their own contexts to continue embedding equity in their work. Um, and of course, for this group too, I'll note, um, I'm excited to also see how we can bridge the AIM Equity Tool with um the ATRAC lens that I know is um, is on the horizon too for, for this commission. So um, that is all that I have on the AIM Equity Tool. Um, I want to be mindful of your time, but I also want to be mindful of any questions you might have. So if you have questions about this part of the update, I'm happy to take them now, or if you'd like to marry it on them, we can cover them all at the end. Once I talk a little bit about that wildfire project too, it's up to you, whatever sounds best to the group.
Question, um, Cameron Fisher, she her. Um, so you said can use this tool, but is there a point where we can get to that um employees or teams are expected to use the AIM Equity Tool? Um, and committees are expected to use the AIM Equity Tool, or is this just a resource?
So that would be my hope. Um, I think speaking, and I apologize if you hear a scratching sound. It's um a interruptive cat. It's very 2020 over here. Um, I would say right now, we're still in the process of rolling out and making sure that all staff are aware that this tool exists and that it is and how to use it, right? And all of that piece, we are still setting that groundwork just because a bit of that uh was paused with the transition. Um, but yes, Commissioner, that would be my hope, that this is, is embedded in our muscle memory as an organization, as the accessibility practices and some of the language access practices that we're using that folks are, as they are more familiar with it, that it is very much just what we do. And it isn't a opt, it isn't seen as opt-in in any way. It's just how we function.
Okay, because I, I feel like this was a hope years ago, right? That this was yeah, that this was hoped to be an expectation, um, not necessarily a requirement, but a strong recommendation um that this was utilized in all areas. Um, and so I guess I'm, I'm a little concerned about the holdup. And I guess I'd also want to know with all committees, I mean, of course, ATRAC, we utilize not necessarily formal AIM Equity Tool, but this lens, we've talked about it a lot in here, um, that this is being utilized within commu- committees as well. So I guess it'd be helpful to know an update on, you know, which committees are really utilizing this, is the home committee, the climate or the you know, affordable housing, are they all utilizing this tool regularly, or is it again, kind of just the hope? Yeah. And maybe you can answer that. Maybe that's some, you know, others can, can, you know, catch us up. What's
Sure.
working and being utilized and where it's like there's some work to be done.
Yeah, for sure. I can speak internally and I'll, I'll leave it to others to speak about the committees and commissions, but I can say internally, my plan kind of for the near future here is to be working closely with part, um, partner departments and teams that really function as internal consultants and those intake points for a variety of different city initiatives, like projects and programs, to make sure that they are onboard and like they are my top priority for getting them to feel comfortable and again, have that muscle memory built in where this is just a part of that product, project chartering process, or it's a part of the um, project retrospectives or those mile marker kind of moments in projects and other initiatives or continuous improvement efforts. Um, because I think that will have a a strong impact in, again, allowing this to saturate the organization in a way that has not happened historically, in part, I think because the original equity framework, what needed to be adjusted to be a little bit more nimble and easier to use in a variety of contexts. That was, to my knowledge, some of the feedback that we were, that was received earlier on in that kind of first iteration. So my hope is that we are now at a point where embedding it and having that expectation that this is a resource that we're using is an easier thing to implement than historically. So I hope that answers your question. And it's definitely on my to-do list to make sure that this, with this kind of second rollout is being achieved in that way. That folks know that it's there and the expectation is for them to be considering these things and embedding it in that design that they're doing.
Thank you.
Um, we have Stephanie, um, Betteridge, um, here to provide a little bit uh more information um as to your question.
Okay. Good evening, Commissioner. Stephanie Betteridge, Assistant City Manager. I use she/her pronouns just to build on some of the Good evening, Commissioner. Stephanie Betteridge, Assistant City Manager. I use she/her pronouns. Just to build on some of the comments that Lindsay made. You, you are correct. In council goals for, including in the last biennium, to develop an equity framework that would be applied to just about everything we do, but with an initial focus on policy issues was part of council goals and has been part of ATRAC's work plan. Lindsay mentioned the framework as we began to pilot it, we quickly realized that it was it was not nimble enough to put into a consistent practice across the organization. And so that really led to the aim tool, which it's nimble. It can be right sized depending on what it's being applied to, you know, whether it is a, you know, looking at conservation based rates for water services to utility fees to where we cite some of our capital projects. So we really wanted something that could be used throughout. We do want to get to a point where this is just the way we do our work, that it doesn't matter if it's outward facing or whether it's an internal project or initiative, that this is what we apply to it. We know that it's going to take a little while to get there. So Lindsay is being really thoughtful about how do we equip employees with the knowledge, the tools and the confidence to be able to apply it? And that's really where we're starting right now. We're focusing initially on some of the work that will come to this commission. And as the topics are presented to you, those items that were outlined by council, where they want ATRAC's policy recommendations and that's around the growth plan, around the water rates. It's around looking at Kathy, because I should remember what the other two are. Housing.
And there's also what Lindsay is going to be speaking on wildfire.
And wildfire resiliency. So as these topics come to you, you should expect that staff has will do that. And as we make those presentations, it's my expectation that we'll walk you through that process and how that guided the decision-making. So I really see this as the initial pilot and the rollout of the aim. We'll continue to iterate and refine as we again, build our capacity as an organization to apply it.
This is Commissioner Jen Kovitz. Thank you for that additional information. I would be interested in a follow-up and I wonder if my fellow commissioners would be to hear case studies of implementation later. So the positive, but also the bumpy. You know, to hear what that, what learnings come from that. And then I'm really interested in this indicator report as well. Would love to see it in the context of different departments. I'm thinking public works or economic development. To, yeah, because, so my understanding is that the work is really internal first and that this tool, once staff feel comfortable on it, would then be taught to like the home committee or that I have that right?
So it's meant to be an internal tool.
Okay.
I don't know that we have made a decision on whether this is a tool that other council advisory bodies would apply or whether advisory bodies would develop their own lens, like the ATRAC lens, that's meant to complement this. So that's a really good question and something for us to take back and think through.
Okay, if you ever want ATRAC recommendation on that, I'm sure the people up here have some opinions about it.
And I'm hoping that as the commission develops the ATRAC lens that is meant to complement the aim tool, that that's something that can be shared with other advisory bodies as well.
Thank you, Lindsay.
Yeah, of course. If there are no more questions, we can move to the aforementioned wildfire education topic if there's time. Okay, thank you. So the city is partnering with Bloomberg Philanthropies and the Center for Public Impact on a wildfire education and risk reduction project. And wildfire risk reduction, by the way, just refers to actions that are taken before a fire to reduce its impact. So this can include creating defensible spaces around homes or, you know, hardening your living area with fire resistant materials and kind of other strategies. But I'm here today mostly because as part of this research project, the project team is partnering with the community to identify barriers and co-create solutions to help us all in our wildfire preparedness efforts. And the project team is in the process now of scheduling interviews with Bend residents and organizations, as well as analyzing data and exploring available research related to this topic. So really, as we're going through this research phase and this project more broadly, we're focusing and hoping to build community trust through the project, foster collective action for safety and prepare residents to adapt to ongoing wildfire threats in our region. And we wanted to reach out to the Human Rights and Equity Commission because the project team would really value your feedback on some questions related to those topics I just mentioned. And that's in part because we recognize you have lived experience that is unique to each, each one of you related to wildfire. You also have strong ties to community and we know that wildfires also noted in your work plan. So this felt like a really natural convergence of interest and opportunity for us, for us all. So if, this would be something again, for individual commission members, commissioners to participate in if you'd like. Right now, the project team is looking to schedule about an hour per interviewee. Really anytime between now and the end of November with a little bit of wiggle room before December 3rd or so. We know it's a pretty tight window. This is it is, it is a big lift. But really, if you're interested in an interview, these generally will last between forty-five and sixty minutes. And we'll be asking questions about if you represent an organization and you want to be representing them in that capacity, about that piece, about information sharing related to wildfire and about your knowledge about wildfire kind of preparedness and risk reduction. We would, of course, also be open to any recommendations you might want to offer on other, other folks who could provide us with additional perspectives on this really important topic. So that's, that's kind of the nuts and bolts here. We also want to note that for our community members who are participating and interested, the Center of Public Impact is offering compensation for time spent with that, in that interview process. So just know that that's available. And I will also just say our project team is more than happy to answer any questions that you might have or concerns about this project. You can email Stephanie, Ian or myself. We're all actually part of the project team, the broader project team. If you have questions, we really value informed consent. We know that wildfire can be a traumatic topic to discuss, so please reach out if you've got questions. Or if you want to participate, we can start, start that process too with scheduling an interview with you. And moving forward more broadly, you can expect updates on this project. The research project is scheduled to conclude in June of twenty twenty-six, so this coming year. And from that point forward, the city will be implementing those wildfire preparedness strategies and kind of those insights from this project in addition to the ongoing work that the organization's doing on this topic. So we'll keep folks that we interview with in the loop on where, where this project kind of goes. So that's really a high level overview of this, but again, the first update of several that you will be getting on this. So thanks for the chance to share.
Thank you.
In the interest of time, I will, any questions that come up around this, let's please hold them for roundtable. But if we could move into Kathy, your ATRAC liaison update?
Thanks so much, Lindsay. And thank you, Chair Ventura. I'll make sure to follow up just with, again, this presentation, Lindsay's contact information, if you are interested in interviewing and perhaps referring somebody to also be part of this project. Thank you. I will try to keep my updates pretty short, just to be mindful of time. So on this first slide, slide, I did want to provide some updates based on reviewing of the ATRAC work plan.
We are going to be able to go in and say, yeah, they're doing one of their policies and procedures. But if you're looking at it, I don't know, like, you know, like this person.
Looks like she is online. Yes.
Well, then I was here in case she couldn't make it.
All right. So I did just want to provide a brief overview of some things that are happening. Currently, myself, Councilor Perkins and Mayor Keebler are in the process of interviewing potential candidates for that open seat on ATRAC. So we will be interviewing, I think, next week, no, first week of December. We've received eight applications for that open seat. So I did want to provide that update. For that, for our December meeting, I'm currently working with Lindsay on the application of that aimed tool to the ATRAC lens. So that complementary lens that will help guide some of the questions and you know, that you'd be able to ask staff when presenting on some of those projects that Stephanie offered. So including the water rate prioritization project, the wildfire resiliency project. There will be that complementary tool for ATRAC. We'll be workshopping that in December and probably in the January meeting as well. I think it's going to take us a couple of meetings to get there. Part of this work is also developing some standard language that ATRAC is able to supply to project managers and to staff about expectations for their presentation and on what kind of conversation discussion is going to happen about the application of the Ames tool for their projects. So that's something that we'll be discussing. I'm also, after this meeting, going to follow up with a doodle poll to try to quickly be able to schedule some time in that first week of December with Ben Duncan from Kernston West, who's consultant with the city, providing some analysis on the city's equity work moving forward. And I also wanted to provide a bit of an updated schedule on how things are looking for quarter one of twenty twenty-six. So January meeting, we've already discussed this a little bit. There will be that new leadership transition and possible continuation of the ATRAC lens workshopping for February. This is yet to be confirmed, but on your initial work plan schedule, there was a potential joint meeting with COBAC on the application of the aim tool. And so it's still being confirmed. I will update you in December just based on how that goes. And then in March, piloting the ATRAC lens on that first project that is identified. Haven't quite all the projects are moving on different timelines. And so I'm just trying to understand if it's the water rate modernization project that you'll see first, it will be, or if it will be something like the wildfire resiliency project. So more to come on that. You'll have more information at the December meeting. Pause here before going into some community updates if you have any questions on these topics.
I'm sorry, what did you say will be on the December meeting? The water rate or that will be
It will be. When? And it will be workshopping the ATRAC lens, which will be your complementary tool. The Ames lens was developed for staff to apply as they work through a project. And so providing a framework for ATRAC to be able to have that conversation with pointed questions that directly refer to the Ames tool application. So we're going to be looking at what that complementary tool looks like for ATRAC. I don't believe it exists yet. And so working on that, we'll be workshopping it.
But not for water rates in December?
Not in December. Water rate in December, I will have more information about when that project will come to you, just based on where it's at in the process right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Commissioner Hannah, did you have anything? I don't know.
No, I was going to clarify that she was just going to tell us which project we would deal with, Rick.
Excellent. All right. I'll move into some community updates if that's all right with everyone. So lately, I've been meeting with some folks for planning of Black History Month. I wanted to give a shout out to Marcus LaGrand over at COCC and the Afrocentric program students coordinator. He's been able to convene quite a few folks within the Black community for this planning. There's going to be more to come in terms of programming that is offered. Last year was the first year that there was a community celebration. I believe there were over two hundred attendees for that celebration and folks from the Oregon Commission of Black Affairs also came to celebrate with folks in Central Oregon. So there's some opportunity perhaps to collaborate and also to participate throughout the month. So I'll be sharing that with all of you. I also wanted to provide a reminder on proclamations that are that are read by city council. So the proclamation process, and this is directly tied to some of that community outreach work with cultural organizations in town. It is a community-driven request. And so as you speak to community members and folks from different community organizations, please refer them to the proclamation request form. That's an opportunity for city council to know from community, we're interested in this proclamation and/or you know, it could be yeah, just some other type of recognition and work with city council. And I think an opportunity to loop in ATRAC on the conversations that happen. I believe we've when Andres was here, workshop the welcoming week proclamation together with community members. There was also a resolution. I believe it was for trans rights resolution that we worked shop together here as well. And so this is an opportunity just to get the word out there that it's not a staff initiated process. It's a community initiated process. We'd like to get the word out. And the third update I did want to provide, over the last year, I've been working with the Latino Community Association on office hours. The city has officially contracted for office space at LCA. And we will start operating out there, I want to say at in the beginning of December, just based on setting up technology in the office and other things. So we'll start out with a once a week presence at LCA's Bend office and trying to move that into twice a week. Just going slowly based on capacity.
Beth Hannah, can you say who's we? Who's, who's going to be there?
That's me. Yes.
Capacity. I mean, what's the, what's the hoped for?
Yeah. So over the years, in partnership with LCA, one, they do incredible work in the community and have almost always operated over capacity. And one of primary bits of feedback we've received are that they provide support to community members on accessing city services that previously it was just more difficult to access due to language barrier. And so in complement to the language access program that Lindsay has been developing, we want to make sure that we're going to where folks are already at. At LCA, community members set up an appointment to go and access a host of services. Part of city presence there is understanding what questions go to LCA that really should be directed to the city. Are we producing the necessary materials in Spanish or other language to support those questions or services requested? And also to understand what kind of, what kind of, what languages materials are being requested in. Is it just Spanish? Are we also getting puré picha? Are we getting other indigenous language requests for materials? We might not yet have, for example, like a access to a language interpretation or translation for that specific language, but it helps us, you know, start looking out there for what does exist, right? And so I think this is part of that qualitative data gathering that will complement a lot of the work that's being done on the language access program and making sure that we're supporting our community partners who are already focused on, rightfully so, some more immediate emergency scenarios. So yeah.
Great.
This is Commissioner Kovitz. I just want to say this is the best news I've heard all day. Yeah. It's really awesome. And I love that the city is putting this, doing this. And I hope eventually we can have someone there more. I know you've got a lot to do, so it might not be you. But just thank you.
No, yeah. And I think that there is an opportunity. We will have use of the community room at LCA. So if ATRAC would like to host a quarterly meeting at LCA offices, there's an opportunity to do that. Just go straight to community where folks are already going is a possibility. So more to come on that. I will absolutely share. I don't want to say a work plan, but more like a plan of operations, once more conversation has been had with LCA staff. So I'll share that with all of you.
Yeah.
And I will go. I wanted to provide an update because food insecurity was a topic of our last conversation. Since then, things have changed a little bit. There's still great need in our community. I wanted to share that City of Bend is working on an employee food drive. Amanda Tom's our employee experience manager, I want to say. Amanda Tom's, Tom's our Employee Experience Manager, I want to say is the right title. Apologies if that's not quite correct, is coordinating this. And so I'll provide this information, HREC, if you would like to support and get the word out to community to support this food drive. We will have the collection, locations will be right here in the City Hall lobby, and there will also be one at the Public Works Campus. So I'll make sure to share that with all of you. These are the same resources that were shared, additional food assistance resources that were shared at the last meeting. So I just, for continuity, wanted to make sure that they were on this slide deck as well. This was also part of Native American Heritage Month. There is an intermediate meeting class as part of COCC's programming this week, on Wednesday, with the link to register. And I do believe some of you were at the first seminar for the Tribal Learning Series. There's still an opportunity to sign up by this Wednesday. I attended and it was really a wonderful presentation by Jalen Sepa. I believe that a few of our city counselors were on there as well. So do encourage if anyone ever wants to bring some learnings from that space into here, please do so. I thought it was a really fantastic and enlightening presentation. Yeah. Any questions before pass it back to Chair Ventura?
Thank you so much. I will pass it back shortly for public comment.
Excellent, all right. Public comment during the Human Rights and Equity Commission is intended to be welcoming and inclusive toward all speakers at public meetings and to create an atmosphere of mutual care and respect. These meetings often offer an opportunity to provide public input and for community members to share thoughts and opinions with their leaders. However, they are not a time to level personal attacks or threats, disrupt the meeting, use obscene, vulgar or discriminatory language, or discourage anyone else from participating. While community members may disagree with each other or the city on issues and give critical feedback, they are expected to do so respectfully by these rules. This advisory body will hear five public comments in two minutes over, to over 10 minutes. If a speaker exceeds the allotted time, they will be asked to pause or be muted to advance the meeting. I do believe we had a community member, Michael Funky, write in to provide public comments, so Michael, invite you up to the speaker. Michael, give me just a second and I will time.
Thank you.
Yes, I saw your, your nudge Lisa.
Yeah, I was like, just a sec. My phone's not turning on fast enough.
Are you ready?
Almost.
Almost.
Want to give you your full two minutes.
Yes, please go ahead.
Hi, my name's Michael Funky, pronouns he and him. I'm a community activist, a union member, and an internet radio producer. And I'm also one of a handful of people here in the community who pushed the city to create this commission back in 2018, 2019. The resignation of Andres Portela III, Ben's Equity and Inclusion Director, and his allegations of a hostile and unsafe work environment at City Hall should worry everyone in our community. The outside contractor, whose name I've not heard, that's been hired by the city to investigate his charges, I believe, needs to look deeply into the culture at City Hall that brought us to this point. Attacking Portello's integrity, as some city officials have done in the media, is not acceptable, in my opinion. A largely silent city council isn't helpful. The Human Rights and Equity Commission needs to play a major role in all of this, including the hiring of a new Equity and Inclusion Director and implementation of any recommendations from this outside contractor. It's my opinion that we can't leave this work to just the city manager's office, to city staff, or to the city council. I'm of the opinion that some white officials and employees at City Hall appear to be challenged by working with people of color. Perhaps mandatory DEI training for all staff and city councils, counselors, might help. In any event, I believe we need some accountability. I believe that City Hall needs a culture shift. And I would like to know who this outside contractor is. I haven't heard who this person is, who's been identified as an outside contractor in the local media. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the gallery that would like to comment? Okay. Any of the attendees, if you could raise your hand if you'd like to leave a comment? Joanne or Evan?
Thanks, everyone. Moving into our HREC Council Liaison Update with Megan Perkins.
Hi, everyone. Sorry, I am not there in person tonight and I was late today. I, because this is normally the, the day that the Coordinated Houseless Response Office Board meets. And so I'm doing double duty from, from Redmond right now, and I had to chair that meeting. So I had to, to be there for that. I would love to share some interesting things that came out of that meeting today. It was a little bit of a somber meeting. We spent a lot of time talking about basically all the things that, that, all the struggles that people, people are having in our community and also service providers and people who are trying to house folks are having in our community with funding either being cut, being severely decreased. Or in, in some instances, we heard from Neighbor Impact about how some funding for things like La Heep has just not arrived. They have not released it at all, and they don't know if it's coming or when it's coming, which affects people particularly in terms of, of heating, the propane and, and things like that. I was really, I was glad that, that Kathy, that you put that up about Neighbor Impact and the online food drive. They were, they were talking at our meeting just now about some other ways that you can help. A lot of people are right now going to Costco and buying a, you know, a huge pallet of tuna, keeping a few for themselves and then dropping the rest off at Neighbor Impact. That's one way that you could be helpful. Another is this idea of this online food drive that you linked, which I think is, is they've, has been really helping Neighbor Impact sort of fill a lot of the, the important coffers for people in our community. And they really need things like tuna and chicken and peanut butter and soup and beans and things that, that have some substance. Another important thing that, that we found out about today are some of the, the holiday meals that are going to be going on in the community for our homeless. Family Kitchen is going to be doing a Thanksgiving dinner on Thanksgiving from two to five. And the Lighthouse Navigation Center is going to be doing a Thanksgiving on Wednesday, the day before Thanksgiving, from 12 to three in, in Bend at the, at the Navigation Center and from five to seven at their facility in, in Redmond. And the Navigation Center thinks that they'll have at least 200 people that will, that will be there to, to have this meal in community. And of course, there are, there are needs ranging from needing food to needing money to buy food, to volunteers. And I, I have attended this before and it's a, it's a really, really wonderful way to, to bring in community and to, to feed people that want a holiday meal. And I just found out that the three people that are running the kitchen at the Navigation Center are three graduate, graduates from their Men's Center program, which I think is, is really great. So just wanted to share that. The other thing that came out of the meeting that we just had is the Coordinated Houseless Response Office does have money left over from our budget that we were, we were allocated money from the state a few years ago and has decided to do an RFP for, for people in our community, for service providers to, it's basically a, a small fund, probably about $130,000 to $150,000. And people can request up to $45,000 to, to, for immediate and urgent needs that they are having due to all of the cuts that we're seeing in terms of food, in terms of shelter. And so we will be getting that out into our community very soon with the idea of awarding this money by January. So if you, if you know of any, of an organization that is, that is, you think could be interested in, in, in doing this or applying for this, please stay tuned and I'm happy to, to fill in any details as we get them. So that's, that's the Coordinated Houseless Response Office. Recently, the, the Bend City Council, we had a work session and we talked about the Hawthorne Bridge and chose a, a awesome design for the Hawthorne Bridge. And also the Reed Market Bridge update, which is, you know, the, the funding we've received to, to put a bridge over, over Reed Market. The, there will be another meeting if you're interested in, in talking a little bit about the Hawthorne Bridge and, and how you, how you would get on it, how you would get off it, what it would mean for the community. There is a meeting on December 2nd at the Dogwood, if you're interested in that. The Reed Market Bridge, it's, it is quite the endeavor. And because of all of the utilities that are in that area, because of, of, you know, going over a railroad, they expect that closure to last two years. And so we all made the same face when we, when we heard that. So we want to make, we would want to make sure before this work started that we had many other different ways for you to get across town so that there are not, you know, sort of horrible unintended consequences of a heck of a lot more traffic. So, but it is going to require a lot of communication with the public about different routes to, to get from point A to point B and also some understanding that this work is going to take some time. But this is something that, that the public has indicated is, is, is really important, a really important priority. So we will keep forging ahead with that and we will obviously have many, many times and places that you can give feedback and express opinions and, and all that. The other thing we talked about recently was a, a new City Hall. And, and what are, for, you're sitting in, in City Hall right now. We've talked a lot about the, the chambers being kind of inadequate for, for really wanting to bring, for accessibility, wanting to bring in more people into the space. The technology is outdated. A lot of our, our city staff is, is not working in a, in a welcoming environment. And we have, have purchased some properties in the central district and are trying to figure out a way to combine a, a new City Hall with some, some real community assets that, whether it's a gathering space for, gathering spaces for a community, whether it's housing, whether it's commercial, how can we sort of combine all of these things together to, to really catalyze that area there on, on Franklin? And also, you know, provide the, the, the city staff a place to be and provide the community a place to gather. And so that's a, it's a big, big thing to kind of wrestle with. And we have consultants that are sort of helping us figure, figure this out over, over the next coming months and years. This is not something that's going to happen in, in the near future at all. I just wanted to share too that we have only one more work session before we, before the end of the year. And that work session is going to be on the, let me see if I can do my, my calendar right here. Is going to be, sorry, December, sorry, December 12th. And that is going to be where we, we get into a little bit more detail and direction on electrification and, and the potential fee. And also where we hear from the Home Committee, which is the committee that is looking at different funding strategies and, and ways we can, we can get more housing built faster and more affordable housing in our community. And we were hearing some recommendations from them. We asked them to do some real quick, some quick strike stuff that we could fix really, you know, that we could fix kind of right away or, or pretty soon. And then have that committee continue to meet, to look at more substantive changes that we can make in, in the future that take more time and staff time as well. So that would be on December 12th from four to six. And I'm happy to answer any questions or? Or anything like that?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. We will move into roundtable and then if any questions come up for the Mayor Protem, please feel free to include them. I opened the roundtable for anything that has come up or any updates.
Please. This is Jackie. Can, can we just be, I would just say it, except I don't remember his name other than Ben.
They're funky.
Can we just?
Yeah.
Say, I mean, there was a quest, can we just say who that is? I just don't remember his name. Yeah, understood, the consultant.
Yeah.
So I think there might be two separate bodies of work that are currently being done or carried out. And so the information I do know is Ben Duncan, who is, works with Kearns and West. He is provide, or he is currently conducting that analysis of the equity work that is happening at the city and will be providing some thoughts, recommendations on structuring of that work in the future along with information about what that new leadership position within the equity space here at the city looks like in terms of the investigation on Andres's resignation letter. I don't recall the information of what that third party investigative body is, so.
I can answer that. You know, like as your city terms office, the contractor is a lawyer who specializes in this kind of work. Her name is Amy Ahrendt, A-H-R-E-N-D-T. We contracted with her and she is performing the work.
Could, could you, I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Again, first name, first name, Amy.
Amy.
Last name Ahrendt, spelled A-H-R-E-N-D-T.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Agatha Ventura, she heard, HREC members will be meeting with Ben Duncan, the consultant, to discuss the future of equity work at the city. But we are not privy to the other investigation at this time, at all.
When is the Ben Duncan meeting?
To be scheduled by Kathy with a doodle poll.
Yes, for the week of December 3rd.
Okay, so did that meeting ever happen last week?
No, it did not.
Okay. Thank you.
This is Commissioner Cobit. I, I, I really appreciate having Lindsay on here today to talk to us. And I, I, I want to do more of that. You know, I, I want to reflect on some things. I'm very grateful to all the work that goes into the agenda. I also noticed that we have 35 minutes for roundtable. I understand, there's a lot of us. I also know that if we had 20 minutes for roundtable, we might be able to have one more staff presentation, more feedback. And so what would it look like if we, if we got efficient somewhere else? I'm not saying it has to be roundtable, but what would that look like so we could do more work here? I would just ask us all to, to think about that. I am excited to learn when water rates and growth plan come before us. I also heard there's a new website happening, so would love to be able to apply the, the HREC lens to that. But I don't want to lose the roundtable because I, I find it really important and especially if we are moving away from subcommittees. Yeah, so I just, I wanted to reflect on that and, and what might it look like to, to hear more from staff? I also know staff are busy. The other thing I would just add is I, I participated as well in the first Tribal Learning Series from Allyship in Action and SEPA Consulting and want to echo that I found it really worthwhile. It helped me better understand why the city has moved away from the land acknowledgement. And so I hope some of you can join us. And then I testified at the, or I advocated at the Home Committee last week for the Moderate Income Revolving Loan Fund. And I know that wasn't one of the tools that the Home Committee ended up recommending for this first round that Mayor Protem suggested. But it just got me thinking again, we've talked a lot about committee cross- but it just got me thinking again, we've talked a lot about committee cross pollination. Um, and I know that that was mentioned as something that might happen, um, and I'll just keep cheering for that. The more we can get together, um, it was really great to see, it was such a different room, different space, different vibe, and I would love to, yeah, cross pollinate as schedules allow.
This is Jackie, I'm wondering, um, what I like. I like that we have so much roundtable and right now we are like kind of in some transition, if you will.
Hmm.
And so I, I'm wondering what can we be, be proactive about right now, tonight? That we, we do still have half an hour. What can we be discussing what, yeah, like what this space is for? Like that work that we just don't have at this exact meeting, but also like there's got to be something we can be productive around with this.
Well, one of Jen, I'm sorry, this is Beth Hannah, and you know, Jen mentioned the website, is there, and it, where are we with that? Can somebody speak to that and let us know where we are with that and when it will be published?
Sure, I will do my best. Um, so I am the communications and engagement team, so I work with, um, Carrie and with Jacob, who've been doing that work, um, for quite some time. Um, this is one of Jacob's, uh, I would say like North Star projects. And so, um, yeah, I think, um, over the last year and a half, um, it's been, there are two separate sections to the work. So the first part has been, um, and I don't, not sure if I can go too much into detail, but there has been, um, some work regarding branding at the city and, um, refreshing what that looks like. And so there is more to come on that, but I not, I can't dwell, I can't delve too much into the details on that. Aside from that, that is going to shape just the, um, the visual aspect of the website and how, um, community accesses the website as well. Um, Jacob and Carrie have met with almost every single, um, department team at the city, um, to talk about the content on the website, how it's presented. Um, I think one of the things, um, different departments had different ways of sharing projects with communities. Sometimes it was, you know, just a sub tab within a webpage. Sometimes a, a project was presented as its own webpage. It was really difficult to navigate, um, amongst different, um, areas. So some of the work has been consolidating all of that content, reducing the overall number of web, uh, pages within the site right now. Um, there's been work on, um, uh, translation into different languages on the website right now. Um, it's kind of obscure on the website. If you go there right now, it's a little bar and it's Google Translate that's being used. And so, um, finding ways to, uh, make that more visible on the website and just easier to toggle, um, as you go through it. Um, not being so content heavy either, so, um, just having it be a very approachable, um, website as well. Something that where you go on there, um, it's not intimidating with, you know, walls of text or anything. Um, it's a lot more, uh, graphic and, um, intuitive. So some of, that's some of the work that, um, is being done. Um, it also affects the way that community members receive information via newsletters. So there's some work, um, with migrating our platform over to MailChimp and, uh, consolidating the number of newsletters that folks can sign up to, some of that content, so it's not, um, just this overwhelming amount. Um, it's much easier to subscribe, unsubscribe, um, things like that. And also making sure that there's consistency along the materials that are being produced and presented on the website. So when you see something like a one pager, um, it reflects what is being shown on the website. You can tell that they come from the same place as well, so that's all of the work that's being, um, that's been done on there. Um, and, uh, staff, um, Cassandra Kehoe, who I believe most of you know, um, has been supporting, um, and as, um, Lisa Larson as well have been supporting, um, on accessibility on the website. So, um, everything from colors, um, so like those visual items, um, how easy it is to, um, yeah, just how information is presented and also, um, perceived by the person who is, um, using the website too. So that's kind of the general overview. I think I'm hearing that there's a lot of interest in, you know, what's coming. Um, there's going to be a content freeze soon internally. It's kind of cool because we're all talking about when everything is frozen on the website, um, so things can be migrated over. Um, and so, uh, what I can do is I can, um, go back to Carrie and to Jacob on the team, see if they, um, you know, have some time to present, um, at the next meeting, even if it's, you know, 10 minute, 15 minute presentation, just to give you an overview of the work. Um, I wanted to give a big shout out to them because that's, it's a really heavy project with a lot of different pieces and, um, they've been doing really excellent work on that, so.
One supplement to that, um, yeah, they, they are doing great and they, they did a great presentation, uh, those two, to the city council at the October 15th council meetings. So if you want to go look at the recording, listen to the recording of that meeting, um, and there's also a presentation in each on the agenda of October 15th council meeting. So, um, that's when kind of the, the, the cover was sort of pulled off for council. And that's a good presentation of that.
Yeah, I think, I think in terms of our, Beth Hannah, and again, I think in terms of HREC work though, we're bringing questions about information about services, things in different languages.
Mm-hmm.
Places where people can connect, the ADA, the, the Wiki, uh, WebDA compliance piece and, uh, you know, ways that we are making sure that everybody, regardless of their social locations or disabilities can, can access all of that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is Kathy, um, I believe, um, Helsa Perkins, you unmuted, would you like to?
I was just going to say the thing, the really great thing about it is going to be that the search function actually works. Um, if anyone's ever tried to search, um, for anything on the, uh, bendoregan.gov site, um, you're always, it's always kind of like, um, it's always this like moment of like, oh, I, there's the most random things in the world have come up from this, this, what I thought was an easy search. Even like earlier today, I randomly typed in human rights and equity commission and all sorts of interesting things popped up that, that were not helpful to me at all. So that is another benefit to this new website and it, it, I can say I've seen the presentation. Um, it is just, it is a, it is an entirely new, um, look and feel. Um, it is so much more welcoming, um, it is so much more community focused, um, and it will be so much easier for people to get, um, the things that they need out of the website. So. Awesome work from, from that team.
And this is Kathy, I think an action item for me is, um, based on what I'm hearing and to highlight, um, your comment, um, that is to, I'll take a look, um, listen into the October 15th meeting, just see how that was presented and the items of emphasis for city council. Um, I think that you're right, there might be some items that HREC would like to hear more on with more or particular emphasis regarding the work on the website. So, um, again, let me reach out to Jacob and to Carrie, um, see if we can get a presentation that, um, you know, it could be, um, uh, just asking questions, um, about the work that's happened on the website that have considered, perhaps not to detail the aims tool as it's still being, um, you know, rolled out to staff, but I know that, um, a lot of those questions were considered in the way that the website was, you know, was built. Um, and so, um, I'll ask for, um, an update from that perspective from them. Thank you.
This is Jackie, um, a different topic. I'm curious, um, if anybody has information on the bus fares reinstating starting in January and thoughts and there's been concerns in various communities and, yeah.
What, about what?
The public transportation, the bus, yeah, um, fare fees are starting up again.
Oh, I didn't.
I believe in January.
They've been free for Cisco.
Yeah.
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 Oh, I didn't know that.
I know that there are supposed to be like some discounts, if you will, or whatever, like programs for certain people. But yeah, just kind of curious, I would love to hear more from whoever the appropriate person is about like, why, why are they starting back up and what some of those like accessibility programs are and how people can access those and, yeah.
This is Commissioner Kovitz, we're talking about CET.
Yeah.
Okay.
About, Elizabeth Hannah, isn't that under like the Central Oregon Intergovernmental Council or not really city of Bend? So we may have limited impact.
We are, the, 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 we are having a conversation, um, with CET on transit coming up soon and I'm trying to find out, figure out when that is, um, but that is definitely something that, um, is going to be on our list, um, and yes, while it's not something that is, that is, um, directly under the city of Bend's purview, the, the city of Bend, um, is a, is a partner and does have, um, uh, we, we are, we are all strongly, um, uh, feel, we've all feel strongly that, um, we need to, to have, um, a, a much tighter, um, partnership with, with CET as, as, um, as it's something that is really important for our community. And I will try and find that date when we're having that conversation.
It, and on that note, I'm so glad you brought that up, Jackie, uh, if there's anything that HREC can do, um, to help support, I addressing that, um, I think that fits perfectly with all of HREC. Um, not necessarily that's connected to the city, but it's a partnership with the city, um, that might be an opportunity for us. Same thing with the county, of course.
This is Commissioner Kovitz, again, I'm struck by the fact that we know some people go into homelessness because they can't access transportation to access their jobs. And if, um, the coordinated response has an RFP going out, perhaps there might be flexibility on some of those dollars to offset transportation costs. Um, just an idea for you to take back, Mayor Protem.
This is Commissioner Scott Jones, um, uh, I was in a meeting, I don't remember exactly when, it's been several weeks, but, um, uh, COIC was letting us know that they were gonna, um, uh, start fares up at the beginning of the year, um, and they indicated at that time to, uh, the provider agencies that I was in this meeting with that there would potentially be, um, passes available for folks, uh, that, like I serve, um, and Central Oregon villages. Um, but I haven't heard updates on that, so I can't give you like a firm answer, but I know that there was definitely some conversation at COIC about how to, um, kind of, um, recognize and understand that there are certain folks that, um, uh, that this would create such a barrier for, and that they were working to try to figure out some solutions by working with some of the partners, some of the shelters, different agencies to, um, maybe provide us a certain number of passes every month or something like that, so. But yes, I'm still waiting to hear more back about that.
Thanks.
Anyone online, I want to make sure you're also, uh, able to participate in roundtable, please raise your hand if you would like to say any. Uh, Commissioner Lowenstein?
Yeah, Commissioner Eli Lowenstein, pronouns he/him. Just wanted to make sure everyone was aware of the Bend Dialer Ride Program. Um, that's for people that are, um, have disabilities or elderly, they, they will get free transportation still, I believe.
Third.
Uh, this is Commissioner Scott Jones again, um, also wanted to bring up the, um, was in a planning meeting with several community organizations earlier today, uh, and we're coordinating or putting together the longest night event again. Um, this is, it takes place nationally, uh, and we have a local event. It's on December 21st, uh, from 5:00 to 6:00 PM at Drake Park. Um, the medical examiner has reported that there have been 18, uh, deaths of houseless individuals so far this year. And so the longest night, um, we honor and remember those folks. It's like a candlelight vigil, there's some speakers and some music, um, hot chocolate from Family Kitchen. Uh, so I would, um, I think it would be amazing to get as many human rights and equity commissioners to attend this as possible, but, um, I'm happy to, uh, continue to provide further details as we get closer to that night too.
Do you have a time?
5:00 to 6:00 PM.
God, is that number, that 18 number, is that within Central Oregon or Bend?
That would be the tri-county, um, region, uh, and, yeah, that was reported by the county medical examiner. So I don't have the exact bend and those are just the numbers, I mean, there's other folks that, um, uh, will be added to that list and there is a link that I don't have with me, but I can provide that you can report if there was a death of somebody who was unhoused or part of that community, um, that can be, so we'll be reading the names that night and, and those sorts of things. So yes, all of those things can happen.
Right. Chair Ventura, I did want to offer, um, I have quite a few follow-ups for everyone here. Um, and noting the time is 6:15, we do have 35 minutes for roundtable. We also don't have to use all that time today. Um, and I am noting the comments about potentially having an additional staff presentation at a future meeting, um, or spending some more time under the HREC business or business, um, light item on the agenda. So I'll note that for our, um, leadership meeting, um, to prepare for the month of December.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And two comments on that, one, I'm also curious what it might look like if we had time to discuss after the presentation, aside from roundtable, so that it gives people both like a first initial responses and then after sitting on it. And secondly, I would also like to add to this final round or to this, uh, last part of roundtable, just, uh, being all on the same page for next steps for, uh, nomination for leadership positions for next time. And so, uh, if December, should people be telling you if they are interested or nominating someone for the next meeting? So that we know who is interested or who is that for January?
Um, I don't know what kind of the standard or preferred practice is, Ian?
Ian White as we're again, um, there's no, there's no defined only one way to do it. Uh, I think sometimes, sometimes people are providing an opportunity for people to so declare or share that they, that they are willing or interested in serving in one of these positions and then having the actual vote happen at a subsequent meeting is good, so people have time to think about it. Uh, but it's really up to you how you want to build this process. Uh, the only real requirement is that there be a vote, uh, sort of an actual nomination and a vote, um, on people who actually want to do it. But you could do it over multiple meetings if you want it.
I would love for us to all get on the same page so that we can improve it from the last election cycle.
Hmm, okay.
Um, I wanted to, please, this is Christina, I'm, I'm honest. I wanted to highlight a couple of things, um, one is like the Latino Community Association, not just, is not just serving Hispanic people. So I know that some other immigrants from other places that they don't speak Spanish go there as well because there's the only place where they can, you know, give them some information. So I want to highlight that too. So they serve more than just Hispanic community. And two, I would like to to comment something about, uh, what happened, uh, a week ago with the Dia de los Muertos celebration. I think it was beautiful, wonderful, just to bring some culture that is represented here in the city. And, and I think we should celebrate more other cultures and, and it's a beautiful way to welcome people and get to know more about each other and bring people together, right? So I just want to say that.
Thank you, Christina, and this is Kathy, before looping back onto the items, um, regarding, um, transition into new leadership, um, because I'm about giving people flowers. I did want to say on Dia de los Muertos, um, lead organizer Emily Chavez Romero, um, who is the coordinator for the Juntos program at OSU Extension Services, did an amazing job along Eduardo Romero from Quetzal Creative, um, Greg Delgado, who's been a longtime community organizer and has organized a Dia de los Muertos celebration at the Ola Corner over the last decade here in Bend. Um, there's, uh, so many people, Daniel Altamirano Givnandez, um, who previously, um, worked with Latino Community Associations now or has, uh, their own consulting practice. Um, my goodness, there's so many names, uh, Dwayne Judd, um, owner of Mirapon Cleaners was a huge collaborator on this work. He's, um, also the, uh, vice chair of, um, the Bend Economic Development Advisory Board. Um, Liliana and Melissa, the owners of
Um, Liliana and Melissa, the owners of Alma Dorada Coffee Shop Downtown, played a huge part. Marcos Rodriguez, the owner of Ola um, restaurant downtown. Um, Gabriela Peden from Better Together, um, Better Together served, um, she's um, their executive director and they served as the fiscal sponsor um, for this work. Latino Community Association stepped in to help provide with some of that fiscal sponsorship support. Um, and uh, Gelsin Hernandez, um, from the uh, High Desert Education District, um, also owns his own consulting practice, um, and is wonderful motivational speaker in town as well. Um, and uh, Valeria Reyes, who um, owns her own um, company and supports um, Latina business owners who don't own websites or have their own websites right now, develop websites and other marketing materials um, to help spread the word about um, their work to the whole community. So I just wanted to.
And Kathy Barguil, who has been a part of her.
It did just.
Yes.
And, and also the, the Open Art Center that they, they.
Yes, Open Art Center on Second Street, um, hosted all of the community workshops for altar building, um, for um, uh, practice for the dancers um, on stage as well. And there's also a lot of city staff. Um, city council approved an expedited permit for this event um, because they were within that ninety-day um, timeframe. So I did want to highlight that um, support and um, staff at our permit department, um, Ariel V. and Julie Devoe, um, who all rallied. Alex Pelayo, who um, is a traffic engineer at the city who developed their traffic control plan. There's a, 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 a whole host of people. And I just always want to make sure that I'm mentioning as many as possible. Um, and um, um, the seed money for this came from Visit Bend. Um, so Zavi Borja over there, um, worked with the group in order to provide that source money for the event as well. So um, yeah, I just wanted to make sure I was putting that out there. Um, and uh, circling back to um, items regarding elections, um, I guess maybe we can do a show of um, hands here if folks would like to provide nominations or express interest at December meeting. Um, and then carry um, that forward into the January for actual voting. Um, so at the next meeting, we can discuss the leadership positions and then have the expression of interest, self nomination or other nomination um, at the December meeting. How do folks feel about that? Show of hands.
Can folks also provide their interests outside of the meeting?
Like before that next meeting?
Before that next meeting, so that could be a part of the conversation, but if they're.
I think if nobody is stepping up to be chair, it might be good that we know that ahead of time. Is that what you're saying?
I just know some people may not feel comfortable, but I, I, at that point, you might need to feel comfortable. I was gonna say, you're interested.
Yeah, they consider it Kathy. I mean, if, if they're not comfortable yet, could send a directive, as opposed to having um, emails going back and forth.
Yes, but I think the goal is also the hope that we know who is running, so by the January election, we're able to vote uh, informed, informed.
This is Scott. Um, isn't that what we were just like in December, we'll have that opportunity?
Yes.
So that we'll firm that up and then, okay, clarify that's.
December meeting will, you know, finalize those, those descriptions that we spoke about. Um, you'll have that time from probably tomorrow to the December meeting to provide individual feedback. We'll come together, approve the descriptions under those positions and at that December meeting, folks will also voice interest in um, those leadership positions.
I'm sorry. I thought you were saying four.
This is, this is Jackie. I, I know we will discuss all of this
Sure.
uh, later, but just so I don't forget, I'm just gonna name it now. One of the things that we need to figure out is do people have to be present to vote or can they, whatever that phrase is, ad libam or whatever, I'm trying to say it wrong. Can they have somebody step in and vote for them if they're not present? There was, yeah, there's, as was already said, there's just a lot of voting things that we really need to get.
Mm hmm.
Sent place.
Yeah.
Yep, this is Commissioner Kovitz. If we, if, I would be very grateful to the leadership team of HREC if you figured out a different way of voting with Kathy before we vote. Okay, please. Thank you.
Yeah.
I think that was a bad news, maybe it's preview. Just, just to think about, a- as you plan, plan for the next couple of meetings, the public meetings law doesn't account or really allow for, I guess, what I call proxy voting. Uh, the, the voting on whatever the issue is occurs between and by the members of the group that are at the meeting, either in person or remotely. So.
Okay.
Um, and, and I will say, although the code says that at the first meeting of each calendar year, the advisory body selects its chair and vice chair, in this case, other positions. We have routinely hunted that a meeting or two to allow for full or closer to full attendance. So the maximum number of people possible can be there to vote. So I guess you think about your schedules and early in the new year, coordinate with Kathy, and if it makes sense to delay it a meeting or two, so that more people can be there or everyone can be there, that's certainly accommodatable.
Action items for um, for me are to work with leadership on the voting and get that communication out to you well before the December meeting on the process and how we're gonna go about that, along with those um, descriptions for your review. Um, Lisa, could you remind me if we have a January date? I think it's the twenty-sixth. I saw that somewhere, but I'm not sure.
Let me see.
I have the thirteen.
I have the thirteen.
Yeah.
And the twenty-eighth both, so. On January.
Yeah, I think it's the thirteenth because we moved, we voted to.
Thirteenth is a Tuesday.
Yeah.
Second Tuesday.
Second Tuesday. Okay. So part of that follow-up email with process will be confirmation of folks being able to attend on the thirteenth. And if that's not possible, we'll work on rescheduling the January meeting for a closer to full attendance. Um, sound all right for everyone?
Especially since it's, it's a quick turnaround date, you know, from the twentieth because it's the twentieth.
Yes.
December, so.
You're right. So we might probably want to push that out um, a bit.
So, uh, Beth Hannah asking it, so the, can we confirm the date for the eighteen, uh, is the eighteenth of December? That's when we're meeting in December?
Um, it's just thirteen.
Thirteenth of January, eighteenth of December.
Yeah, eighteen. Eighteenth of December. Yes. Okay. I have those items noted.
Great.
Back to you, Chairman.
Thank you. Any final thoughts, qualms, concerns?
Wonderful.
So many, but. So with any other HREC business, with no further business, the Human Rights and Equity Commission's November seventeen, twenty twenty-five hybrid meeting is adjourned at six twenty-seven PM. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. What was the concern about the voting?
I think one of the concerns was the.